Are we in prayer?
The seconds till you arrive.
Did I have seconds? I could've wasted yet?
Well, we're ready to go as soon as you are.
It was worth it.
I'm in, Mayor. You ready? The Columbus City Council meeting for March 1, 2021 will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, Nebraska Revised Statute 84-1407, a current act of this is posted in the meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Bulkeley?
Here.
Augustine Schulte?
Here.
Barr?
Here.
Hamer?
Here.
Jablonsky?
Here.
Kreshaw?
Here.
Lor?
Here.
Roth?
Here.
Schilling?
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Mrs. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other, as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Good evening. Welcome, everyone, to tonight's meeting. If at any time during our meeting this evening, anyone in our audience would like to come forward and speak to anything that's on our agenda, we'd ask that you please come forward, give your name, your address, and we'd ask that you limit your comments to five minutes or less. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 4, Consent Agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 4A, Minutes of the February 16, 2021 City Council Meeting. Item 4B, quote from Gearing Construction and Ready Mix Company Incorporated, in the amount of $23,000 for concrete paving on 47th Avenue near the fire station. Item 4C, Resolution Number R21-31, approving the agreement with the state of Nebraska for permanent easement in Roseland Cemetery in conjunction with the Highway 30 reconstruction project. Item 4D, Resolution Number R21-32, approving the purchase agreement with Auto One Incorporated in the amount of $14,040 for real property for the lift station number 7, 23rd Street, east of East 3rd Avenue. Item 4E, Resolution Number R21-33, approving the purchase agreement with SBG LLC in the amount of $9,620 for real property for lift station number 7, 23rd Street, east of East 3rd Avenue. Item 4F, Payroll and Bills on File. Mr. Mayor and Council, is there anything you'd like removed from consent status?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. All voted in favor. Motion passes. Moves on to public hearings.
Item 7A, Public Hearing, Application of Ferguson Properties Incorporated for Final Plat and Development Agreement of Park Place 9th Edition, 33rd Street and 45th Avenue. This is continued from the February 16, 2021 meeting. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here would like to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move the hearing to close.
Motion in a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Unanimously aye. The motion passes.
Item 7A, 1. Public Hearing, Determine Whether Park Place 9th Edition Should Be Included Within the Corporate City Limits. Continued from the February 16, 2021 meeting. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I recommend the public hearing be closed.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Unanimous, it passes.
Item 7A, 2. Resolution Number R21-29, Approving the Final Plat Development Agreement and Bringing Said Edition into the Corporate City Limits. This is continued from February 16, 2021 as well. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move the Resolution Number R21-29 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution R21-29. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Unanimous, it passes. Brings us up to new business.
Item 13A, Plans, Specifications, and Estimate of Cost in the Amount of $900,000 for Authorization to Advertise for Bids for Water Concrete Improvements of 2021, 15th Street from 10th Avenue to 23rd Avenue. Plans and specifications on file in the Engineering Department.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Plan, Specifications, and Estimate of Cost for Water and Concrete Improvements 2021 be approved and staff be authorized to advertise for bids.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the plans and specifications for improvement 2021, 15th Street, 10th Avenue to 23rd Avenue. Any discussion?
Got one question.
Yes, sir.
What about 23rd to 27th Avenue? When would we finish that? Sorry to make you get up, Rick. Why would we not finish all the way?
Yeah, that segment, that segment needs it as well. So, when we did our pavement management program, you know, if you recall, that's where we look at all the streets and we put the worst ones in the top and work our way down to it. That segment of 15th Street from 23rd to 27th didn't rank as high as this one segment from 13th, from 13th to 23rd. And so then it's just a matter of dollars and budgets and stuff like that. And so, we recommended doing this segment this time and then, you know, we don't know what future budgets are, but that one would come to the top here sooner than later.
Rick, while you're there, I had a question that will address one of the other items. I think it's good enough that it can be asked here. What's the breakdown between concrete and asphalt? Where does one go and where does one not go?
Okay, so the asphalt's the next one. Yeah, you're right. So, the asphalt just goes, the asphalt goes from where the asphalt is now. So, the 12th Avenue Viaduct Project went on 15th Street up to 13th Avenue. And so, 13th to 23rd is where the asphalt is today. Now, the concrete part, we're doing some patching. Actually, there's some patching on the east side, 15th Street on the east side of 12th Avenue. That is not asphalt over laid today. We don't plan on doing that. There's just some patches that need to be fixed, and that's why that one is 10th to 23rd.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any, any other questions while we're?
However, those curbs would all be concrete though, right? On the outskirts of the?
Yes. Yeah, the project is redoing all the curbs, doing the ADA ramps and the asphalt in between, correct?
Thank you. Everybody good?
Yep.
Save. So, 13A, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Unanimous, motion passes.
Item 13B, Plans, Specifications, and Estimate of Cost in the Amount of $200,000 and Authorization to Advertise for Bids for Asphalt Paving Improvements 2021, 15th Street from 13th Avenue to 23rd Avenue. Plans and specs are on file in the Engineering Department.
Mr. Mayor, I move the Plans, Specifications, and Estimate of Cost for Asphalt Paving Improvements 2021 be approved and staff be authorized to advertise for bids.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the plans and specifications for asphalt paving for 2021. Any discussion? Probably had it already. Okay, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Unanimous, motion passes.
Item 13C, Plans, Specifications, and Estimate of Cost in the Amount of $1,320,600 and Authorization to Advertise for Bids for Lift Station Replacements 2020, 23rd Street, east of 3rd Avenue? East of East 3rd Avenue, excuse me, and 18th Avenue north of 23rd Street. The Plans and Specifications are on file in the Engineering Department.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Plan, Specifications, and Estimate of Cost for Lift Station Replacements 2020 be approved and staff be authorized to advertise for bids.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the Authorization to Advertise for Bids for Lift Station 2020. Any discussion?
Just a question. The, the, in the consent agenda, we approved some purchase of property. Is that part of that 1.3?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, is 1.3, property acquisition is not part of the 1.3. This is just construction.
Just the lift station.
Yeah, we have property acquisition in the budget, though.
Right, right. Just so there's, yeah, people?
It is part of the same project, though.
It's part of the same project. It's one of these lift stations, correct?
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Unanimous, motion passes.
Item 13D, Comments from the Mayor and City Council Members. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, no discussion can be held on this item.
Oh, comments from the city council, Councilman Barr.
Well, tomorrow from 10 until 2, Ozzy Claws, our local humane animal shelter, will have a fundraiser. And it's put on by a young man by the name of Chris Rotunda, and he has formed Jordan's Way. Jordan, the one the rescue dog that he feels changed his life. And he is going to make five, he's stopping in all 50 states. He's going to hit 300 shelters and help them raise funds. It's said to be a high-energy, zany, fast-paced, rattatap spiel. And the Humane Society wants all of you to know that you're all invited. Please stop down sometime between 10 and 2. You may even get involved and, and maybe make a donation. And I'm going to go out on a limb and chariot you guys to come up with 250 bucks. And I'll take a pie in the face. $500, take a pie in the face and the ice cold water bath from the Got Cooler Dunk. So, that's your challenge. I'm hoping to see you all there. Please. The challenge stands for the whole room. Do you guys come up with 500 bucks? I'm swimming.
All right, Charlie. You got us on, on notice. You got us on notice. Any other comments from council members? I have nothing this evening, so we'll move on to resolutions.
Item 14A, Resolution Number R21-34, Approving the Contract with Gearing Construction and Ready Mix Company Incorporated in the Amount of $3,403,102.15 for Street Improvement District Numbers 185, 186, and 187.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of Resolution Number R21-34.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve Resolution Number R21-34. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Unanimous, motion passes.
Item 14B, Resolution Number R21-35, Approving the Non-Exclusive Franchise Agreement with ALO Communications LLC for Construction and Operation of a Cable System.
Mr. Mayor, I move Resolution Number R21-35 be adopted.
We have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution Number R21-35. Any discussion, or would anybody like to address us?
Mayor, City Council, my name is Brad Moline. I'm president of ALO Communications. And Dave Miller and I just came up here to see if we could answer any questions. I know ALO's new to the community. And one of the things that we do when we bring our fiber optic network is not only do we construct it, but we become your friends for the next 30 or 40 years. And so, I wanted to make sure there was an opportunity to ask us questions, discuss what our, our plans are, what we've done in other communities. But I'll give you just a three-second history of ALO. We were started in 2003 in Imperial, Nebraska. Nelnet purchased a portion of our company in 2015. We built Lincoln, and we now are in 16 communities in Nebraska. We pass roughly 25% of Nebraskans with fiber. So, 25% of Nebraskans can get gigabit service now. And we're excited that the city staff and utility department and everyone has worked with us to get to the point of a franchise agreement. And we're excited to start constructing a network in Columbus.
We're excited to have you here. Just so the public knows, this has been an ongoing conversation since probably September, October. And it's just taken time between COVID and holidays and lawyers coming together to make sure everybody was comfortable with what was happening. I think many of us probably know that ALO has come into Norfolk in the last year or so. They have just, they're just getting ready to start in Fremont. So, I think, I think it's safe to say there's a lot of excitement in seeing you guys come to town, and we wish you the best, and we look forward to a, a good relationship. Any com, any questions or comments from council members?
I was wondering, do you, will this, will you guys have a manned office that?
Yeah, absolutely. We expect to employ between 15 and 25 people here permanently. And the, during the construction phase, we'll, we'll have between 50 and 75 at different times. And, but, but our model is, we believe that having a local office, the simple way of saying it is AT&amp;T probably had it right in 1975 or 1980 when they manned an office. We do the same model, except for we put world-class infrastructure underneath it.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
When do you expect to start, and when do you expect to have the service online first?
We'll, we'll, the cable franchise agreement is the first step. We've done most of the design. We'll meet with the utility department and make sure that everybody's nodding their head and saying, "This is the path to, to go," as well as get a pole attachment agreement with the Loop Power. And then the next steps are figure out what's the right pace for the community. Our goal would be to substantially complete it yet this year. More likely than not, it'll move into at least the first quarter of next year. But most of it get done this year. And the first customers come on live, it'll be probably mid to late third quarter. And a lot of testing goes in, those types of things. We are a phone company, so we have to be able to attach to 911, make sure that everything operates safely, dependably, and bring a new competitor to the community.
Yes, sir.
This is a fiber optic system including the last mile?
Yeah. ALO, in our history, has never owned any copper or coax. So, every inch of it is fiber. And it's, as I like to say, it's world-class. It's as good as Seoul, South Korea, or, yeah, Seoul, South Korea, or Tokyo has. And Nebraska's very lucky in that years ago, Network Nebraska connected fiber to most of the schools. People, I don't think in our state realize how game-changing that was. And so, that allowed us to ride the investments that some others made to connect the cities by fiber. And then we take fiber from there to a central office to the individual home, business, apartment complex, or governmental unit.
And I think Dave made a comment about our, our utility group and then Loop Power. And I think it's, we want to make sure the public understands this is also becomes a partnership with Loop Power because, of course, they are our power, our, our power source here in Columbus. So, I know their, their communications, not only over the past months, have been with us on our franchise agreement, but it's also been with Loop, and that will continue.
Yeah, and your utility department and Loop Power know your community far better than we do today. Next year at this time, I hope we, we're about 90% there, 95% there. And so, the, the current knowledge does many things. One, it makes sure that we don't build an area that's going to be a new street or, or something like that very shortly. But number two, it has to be incredibly safe. You know, in our history, we've never had anything materially go wrong. And we will, you know, make sure that we do everything we can so nothing material ever goes wrong. And that's real important. We're working with power, we're working with gas, we're working with other utilities. And so, that care and careful work is part of it. Bauer Construction will be our main contractor on the project, but we do most of the work as far as splicing and design and customer installation. We don't outsource the installation. Historically, we have never had anybody but ALO employees go into home business, et cetera. And so, we're excited to be in Columbus. Years and years ago, when we started, RBW did our first designs. So, that's pretty local. And my family also has some grocery stores. And years and years ago, there was a gentleman here who taught us how to make bratwurst. And he said, "Well, I don't think you'll compete with me in Columbus, so out on the Colorado-Nebraska border, I'll tell you how to make it real good bratwurst."
That'd be Mr. Nabalsky.
Absolutely. And so, it was, I've had some tie-ins to Columbus for a while. Originally, my family's from York, so.
Awesome. Again, welcome, welcome to Columbus. We're looking forward to it.
Well, thank you very much.
Any questions?
Any other questions? We'll leave my card. By all means, reach out to me if there's any questions. You know, this is a major project, and it will be disruptive. I don't want to promise anything else because we have to close streets. We have to get in backyards. But I believe the outcome's phenomenal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Although, yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Taylor Anderson, 3653, 36th Avenue. So, I'm a coax cable customer today for internet. What will the, the benefit be to me once you get this installed?
The, the real benefit is, number one, competition. It's an added competitor who, and usually what happens is our competitors lower their prices, and everybody ups their game a little bit. And our standard speed's 500 meg by 500 meg, and we average about 5 milliseconds latency. If you're a gamer, you understand that, or if you're a high-tech business person. And we sell that for about $60 a month. So, it's, and then we go up to gigabit today. And I, I hope we get to it to, by the end of the year, but believe it or not, we'll start introducing 10 gig to the home, which is, as they say, "Well, that's more speed than we'll ever need." Well, I remember back in a time when we had more speed than we ever needed, and that's happened about three or four times. And so, the, the main thing we try to do is with fiber, future-proof the, the network because as speeds go up, we just put different electronics. And then we, we attach to Amazon Services or Azure or, you know, the various places in Omaha. And then we're redundant in Denver as well.
And this allows for voice over IP too, correct?
Now, I'm going to get real technical with you. We are a phone company, so at our core, we don't use the internet for our phone. Now, it is fiber, so inherently, everything's IP. So, I don't want to get nuanced, but I want to make that very clear that we don't use some far-off switch in, you know, the east or west coast. Our switches are, we have three locations, Omaha, Denver, and Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And they're what's called a virtualized switch. So, if any one goes down or any two goes down, the voice services stay live. At our core, we're a business phone company years and years ago, in 2003 when we started.
But you still have internet service, this is part of it.
Yep. Internet, phone, television, cable, and then also data transfer, hosted PBX, which is the phone system that goes in your business or governmental unit, entity. So, it's, it's full service. I, I recommend you go to alofiber.com. You can see many things. You won't see Columbus there yet, but we, until we get their agreements done. But you can see where we are, and you can see all of our residential products. Business products are really on individual case basis. But our goal's to save about 10%, which gives you about a one free a year.
We got a good explanation, and we got you a little sales pitch there, so you can count it.
Yeah, you know, I'm accounting by trade, but most people say I'm kind of in sales.
You good with the explanation, Taylor?
Yeah, and I have one other question from Mayor and the council. So, when it says "non-exclusive franchise agreement", I assume that means exactly what it sounds like. Five years from now, someone comes up with a better mousetrap they can come to town to and sell it. Nothing?
That's right.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by aye, those opposed nay. Unanimous, motion passes.
Item 14C, Resolution Number R21-36, Approving the Agreement with B2 Environmental Incorporated in the Amount of $91,163 for Hazardous Material Abatement at the community, for the community building project.
Mr. Mayor, move that Resolution Number R21-36 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion to approve R21-36 with B2 Environmental. Any discussion? Since this is talking about the library, I'll just scoot a little bit from it and say that the library had an extremely successful sale on Saturday. I think the public can be happy that there was a great turnout for it, and it went well for the surplus materials. And it's talking about the library, so we're okay. All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those in favor, please signify by aye, those opposed nay. I do, I'm assuming, motion passes unanimously.
Item fourteen D, resolution number R two one dash three seven, authorizing discontinuance of COVID-nineteen waiver requirements for the use of municipal-owned property and facilities.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of resolution number R two one, two one dash three seven.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to adopt resolution number R twenty-one dash three seven. Any discussion? And I'm assuming this is very similar to other communities and kind of following through on everything.
Right, so we, when we passed resolutions almost a year ago requiring COVID waivers, there was no end date on that requirement, so this will officially end that requirement as we go into another spring, summer season of activities.
So, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Did you vote, Pam? Yes.
Unanimous, passed.
Item fourteen E, resolution number R two one dash three eight, approving the amendment to an assignment of purchase agreement with Jackson Services Incorporated to J. James Jackson and Kathleen Marie Jackson for the purchase of the city-owned property located at Tenth Street and Thirtieth Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R twenty-one dash thirty-eight be adopted.
Have a motion in a second to approve resolution number R two one dash three eight. Any discussion? I'm assuming this is just a cleanup for something that they wanted different than how it was originally put together, correct?
Right, it's the same purchase agreement we previously approved, but the Jacksons would rather have it in their personal names rather than the business name, but still for the same purpose.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Unanimously passed. Brings us up to ordinances on their first reading.
Item fifteen A, ordinance number two one dash zero eight, authorizing issuance of sales tax bond anticipation notes in an amount not to exceed ten million dollars for the community building project. This is for the, sorry, I'll just want to clarify real quick. This is for the library, community room, children's museum portion of the project.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the rules be suspended and ordinance number two one dash zero eight be read by number only.
We have a motion in a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number two one dash zero eight by number only. Any discussion, or would anyone like to come forward and give us any information?
Suspending, just suspending the rules, right?
Well, we, we can vote on suspending the rules, and then we'll just, we'll hold off to. You're fine, you're fine standing there.
Don't run off.
Don't run off yet. All those in fa, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Unanimously passed.
Ordinance number two one dash oh eight.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance number two one dash zero eight.
We have a motion in a second to adopt ordinance number two one dash zero eight. Any discussion?
All right, thank you. Cody Wickham with DA Davidson. I guess mainly I'll take questions here, but just kind of a brief background on, on how we got to the bond anticipation notes structure. We looked at a number of different avenues on how to go with this particular financing. This is tight, this is tied in with your, with your other sales tax revenue bonds, so we have to be careful with how we structure the debt modeling it going forward. The other part that comes into play is that basically due to the COVID environment, these types of security, those being sales, the only security behind them being sales tax revenues, are kind of difficult in the marketplace right now. Those are really the, the three areas that we've heard that are challenging are sales tax revenues, hospital revenue bonds, and airport authority, and you can guess why on all three. So when we weighed the option of going to a long-term financing, we looked at twenty, or ten, fifteen, and twenty-year sales tax revenue bonds right now. The market's just not as favorable as you would imagine. Everyone's been hearing how great and low interest rates are right now, but for this, again, this type of security, it's just not really the case. You, because these are backed by sales tax bonds, you have the luxury of, of letting those revenues build up and then downsize the project. So ultimately, we looked at, at both a long-term financing or utilizing bond anticipation notes, a short-term interim bridge loan. We're going to, we're going to sell three-year bond anticipation notes. We're looking at very, very low interest rates right now on, on those type of securities, probably in the point six, point five percent range. So if you're looking at it as a twenty-year picture as a whole, if you can do the first three years at, at half a percent, you're really off to a good start. It allows you three more years of building up revenues. And then when we go to switch to long-term bonds, instead of doing ten million, two or three years from now, we downsize that by whatever is generated between now and that time. So you're, you're locking up a smaller amount for a longer term. We, we did, we ran some traps on, on best case and worst case scenario. If rates are very similar, you know, three years from now, as they are today, the city would be ahead, almost eight hundred thousand dollars in interest expense. If rates do go up by half a percent, that number's still five hundred and sixty thousand on the plus side, and we ran it all the way up to about a hundred and thirty-five basis points is where it starts to flip. The average over the last ten years has been closer to a hundred of where we are now, so we think that gives a pretty good cushion. We're also going to put a, a shorter call feature on these bond anticipation notes. We're going to make them callable in a year. That way, if we do start to see things trend away from us, you can prepay, refinance, and go to a long-term financing with no penalty. So trying to put you guys in the best position that we can.
Sounds good. Any questions?
Yeah. What is the cost of putting the shorter call feature on the, the notes?
You know, only going out three years to begin with, to make them non-callable is, is not very commonplace. They, they're used to seeing a shorter call feature on notes, because these are, these are primarily used, or I guess, I should say, most commonly used for street improvement projects, because you cannot go to permanent financing until the project's done and you have a engineer's signed certificate of completion. So they're used to seeing a one- or two-year call in case the project's finished ahead of schedule, so it's not that uncommon. Going with a one-year, we might be given about five basis points compared to, you know, a two-year or non-callable.
If we were all to believe Jerome Paul, which we all do, he would say that this blip that's been in the bond market the last day or two is just that, a blip. And so, given that circumstance, if it plays out, your strategy is very, very good.
Yeah, we think it's a sound strategy. Again, it's tough to see, you know, six months down the road, much less two or three years. That's why we're putting the shorter calls in place. And, and we do know that by downsizing this issue, you're, you're mitigating your risk factor, and we ultimately think it's a good plan for the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think we're good.
Very good.
Thank you very much. We have a motion in a second to suspend the rules. Any further discussion?
No, to adopt.
Oh, to adopt, I'm sorry. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Unanimous, motion passes.
Item fifteen B, ordinance number two one dash zero nine, authorizing lease purchase transaction of BOKF National Association and approving the issuance, sale, and delivery of certificates of participation in such lease in amount not to exceed seven million dollars for cost to acquire, construct, furnish, and equip a new city hall.
Mr. Mayor, recommend the rules be suspended and ordinance number twenty-one dash zero nine be read by number only.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number two one dash oh nine by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Unanimous, passed.
Ordinance number two one dash oh nine.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of ordinance number twenty-one dash zero nine.
Have a motion in a second to adopt ordinance number two one dash oh nine. Discussion, please.
Okay. This piece of financing is a little more straightforward. The, the certificates of participation are backed by a limited tax general obligation of the city. We expect to get very good execution on, on these cops. We ran both ten-year and fifteen-year scenarios. Really can't go wrong in either model. You're under, we're projecting under two percent total cost of capital, which on, on a fifteen-year financing is something that we haven't seen in a long, long time. With the finance committee, a, a question did get brought up. What was the, the rate on the combined utility bonds? And, and just to follow up, when we did those in the summer, we actually saw rates hit the absolute bottom that we've ever seen on, on August eleventh, and we closed the combined utility bonds on, on August nineteenth, and that was a one-point-seven-six. On these cops going out a similar timeframe, fifteen years, we're expecting to be in the one-point-nine percent range if things don't change too drastically over the next couple of weeks. We do have some steps that we need to take care of, that being a ratings call with S and P. We've already got that on the calendar for next week, March tenth, and then however long it takes them to turn around the rating, we'll be ready to go and hit the market. So we've got about three more weeks for things to stay calm. I don't expect too many surprises, and I think you'll get excellent execution on this, on this sale.
Excellent. Any questions?
I'll just say, thanks for bringing that forward. I was going to ask that question again tonight.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Unanimous, motion passes.
Item fifteen C, ordinance number two one dash one zero, vacate in the alley on the east side of Twenty-Sixth Avenue and south of Twenty-Third Street.
Mr. Mayor, I move the rules be suspended and ordinance number two one dash one zero be read by number only.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number two one dash one zero by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance number two one dash one zero.
Mr. Mayor, I, will ordinance number two one dash one zero be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to adopt ordinance number two one dash one zero. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Unanimous, motion passes.
Item sixteen A, ordinance number two one dash oh six, approving annexation of property in part of the northeast corridor of the southeast corridor, section twenty, township seventeen north, range one east, and in part of the southwest corridor of section twenty-one, township seventeen north, range one east of the six prime radiant Platte County, Nebraska, south of the intersection of Third Avenue and Nineteenth Street, and east of the intersection of Third Avenue and Thirteenth Street. No motion is necessary. This is the second reading. Just as a reminder, this is the area that sits under the viaduct on Third Avenue.
All right, no motion, no action is needed. Brings this up to adjournment.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.